So today, we've got a really nice session today. Today, we're going to be working to practice to cultivate joy and abundance, feeling into the heart space, really allowing joy to flow, and feeling that abundance within. We feel abundance within and that abundance flows outwardly out to others. So it'll be really lovely. Make sure you're seated somewhere nice and tall spine, so you're seated on something, so your hips are elevated and higher than your knees. If you're on a chair, just sit on the edge. And we're just going to bring our shoulders up towards our ears. And roll them back down. Bring our shoulders back up towards the ears. And roll them back down. And one last time, bring your shoulders up. And then slowly let them melt down, bringing the shoulder blades towards each other, the heart radiating forward. The neck's nice and neutral, slightly tuck the chin and close the eyes. And allow the eyes to roll in towards that space between the eyebrows, the third eye, so rolling them up and in. And then just take a moment to observe the breath. Seeing if it's fast or slow. Long breaths or short breaths. See how you've risen today. And see if you can start to breathe in and out through the nose. And bringing your palms together at the heart space, namaskar mudra in prayer. Thumbs gently pressing against the breastbone, breastbone gently pushing back. So we begin our practice with one round of om. Take a clearing breath first, in through the nose. And out through the mouth. Inhaling. Feeling that lovely vibration of om at the heart space. As we said, an intention for our practice today. An intention to locate reasonless joy. A state of bliss. Abundance in nature. Abundance in consciousness. No lack. No lack. Pure abundance. Joy, bliss. Paying attention to that intention. But if not, that intention is just merely wishful thinking. Placing the left hand on the chest and the right hand on the belly. And taking a few nice, long, deep breaths into the belly. Breathing in through the nose and out through the nose, conscious breathing, awareness of our breath. Breathing in, pushing the diaphragm down. Allowing our belly to expand, the lower hand rises. And as we exhale, pull the diaphragm up, creating space, and the belly softens. Breathing consciously with awareness. Deep down into the belly. Into the ribs and the chest. And as you exhale, the chest lowers and the ribs contract, the belly softens. Deep inhales. And exhales. Couple more rounds here, breathing consciously and with awareness, using the full capacity of the breath. Breath can shift our thinking state, our feeling state, our emotional state, just by bringing awareness to our breath. And after this last exhalation, allow the hands to drop down, resting on the knees. And just observe the qualities of a healthy resting breath. Long, slow, fluid, smooth, effortless breath. This practice connecting to subtle joy. And feeling the sensations around the heart space. Through the use of mantra, we'll be activating that energetic response in the heart. Using mantra kriyas in this practice today. As we begin by just waking up the spine. Let's start doing some seated cat cow. So as we inhale, we stretch and arch the spine, extending, heart radiating forward, lifting the chin, exposing the vishuddha chakra. As we exhale, rounding the spine, flexion, navel comes towards the spine, chin drops. Just moving with the breath fluidly. In through the nose, out through the mouth. Moving with the breath and making it long and fluid and soft. Moving some energy in the body. We want to activate and get some movement in the spine, so our prana, our life force, energy flows along our spine. So we want this nice upward spiraling of energy in our practice. So we want to awaken that spine. Moving with the breath. And even start moving the shoulders around, go a little bit circular now. And see if we can get some flow into the body. Moving the body around, any movements that feel good, move the neck. Tuning into the body this morning. Start to activate these chemicals in the body through our practice, coming to stillness. Hands can be resting on the knees or resting in the lap, whatever feels good. As we move into radiating light within. So we're going to take seven breaths of air through the nose. So seven breaths of air to create one full inhalation. We'll pause at the top. And then we'll exhale through the nose in one full exhalation. So we'll do a clearing breath first, in through the nose. And out through the mouth. And then we're going to inhale through the nose. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Hold the breath, creating one full, complete inhalation. And then gently exhale in one part through the nose. Inhaling through the nose, seven portions. Creating some space between each breath in slowly. Holding the breath at the top, just gently. And exhaling through the nose. Inhaling seven portions through the nose. Holding at the top. Exhaling in one portion. Through the nose, having the eyes rolled in at the third eye. As you're inhaling through the nose in seven portions. Visualizing light rising up along the spine. Filling up your whole being. Exhaling in one portion through the nose. Inhaling. Filling up the whole body with golden radiant light. As you pause. And exhale that light now radiating all around you. Filling up the body with gold and radiant light. Abundance of light. Feeling fulfillment, whiteness. Presence. Few more rounds here. Radiant light within. Radiant light all around you. Feeling this whiteness of being, this presence. And as you finish this next exhale, let the practice go. Allowing your awareness to drop down deep into your body. As we bring mantra into our practice. Activating the heart space, the anahata. Bringing your palms raised above your head, palms interlaced. And we're going to start moving in big circles in a clockwise direction. Allowing a full range of motion through the shoulders and the upper back, moving slowly. Creating spaciousness in the upper body. As we bring in the mantra. Aham, prema. I am love. Aham, prema. Aham, prema. Aham, prema. Aham, prema. Aham, prema. Moving with grace, continue with the mantra. Moving with flow. Moving with devotion. Encouraging trust. Only when we trust can we truly surrender to love. Aham, prema. 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 Coming to stillness, palms still above the head, feeling the light from the palms of the hands coming through the crown. And radiating at the heart space. Love, joy, abundance and bliss. Releasing the hands down. Activation of the heart space. Taking a few breaths here. Take any movements in the shoulders if you need to relax the shoulders after that. And bringing our hands so the fingertips are touching haranyagaba, so above the root but below the navel. This is the cosmic womb, haranyagaba mudra. And we're going to start nourishing the body within. So we're going to start sipping like we're sipping breath through a straw through our mouth. So we start rising up. Lip our hands into lotus mudra, hamala at the heart, keep rising up. Past the lips, drinking amrita, the sweet nectar of life. Up past the third eye. And then we keep the edges touching anjali mudra as we exhale through the nose. Offering forward. You've got the mudras, you can drop into the practice, sipping air through the mouth. Exhaling through the nose. Dropping in. Oxygenating the bloodstream with this breath. Creating nourishment within. Restoring energy. Bringing hope by directing our awareness to receiving this nourishment, this strength from the universe. Being awareness to ourselves, nourishing ourselves within. Loving ourselves within. As within, so without. How we are feeling within, we radiate that outwards. It's important that we feel this love for ourselves. This abundance, no feeling of lack. And abundance can be prosperity abundance as well, no feeling of poverty, lack. Recognizing we have everything that we need. Few more rounds here, filling up with nourishment. Recognizing that all is within us. And then radiating that outwards. Cultivating that state of bliss. And going through a final round. During that breath in. Radiating outwardly. And meeting in haranyagaba with the hands, fingertips touching. Above the root, below the navel, closing the eyes. Feeling that nourishment within. And that rejuvenation within. Recognizing that joy that lies within you, that abundance within you. As we drop into our essential nature, our true self, that of bliss. Sat, chit, ananda, building a positive mind. Experiencing and radiating joy and bliss. Sat being the unchanging truth. Pure existence of spirit. Chit, pure, unbounded consciousness. And ananda bliss. As we sit here in haranyagaba, we chant the mantra sat. As we move to lotus mudra at the heart. We chant chit. And then with a smile on our face inducing bliss. We radiate our arms above and say ananda. Join when you're ready to drop in, sat. Chit. Ananda. You can be loud, whisper, all within. Sat. Chit. Ananda. Feel that joy. Sat. Chit. Ananda. 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 Sat, truth. Chit, consciousness. Ananda bliss. Sat. Chit. Ananda. Sat. Chit. Ananda. Soften it down, sat. Chit. Ananda. 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 Last round with the mudra. Sat. Chit. Ananda. Allow the hands to rest on the knees. Allow the mantra to settle within. Placing the hands in gyanamudra, palms facing up, thumbs and pointer finger touching, the other three fingers extended. Eyes closed deeply inward. As we use the power of mantra to focus our attention. Let go of the chatter of the mind. As we stay with this beautiful mantra of sat, chit, ananda. Not locating bliss, but being bliss. Our true nature, boundless. When we transcend thought and dive deeper within ourselves. We find our awareness expands. We locate bliss, our essential nature. You can say this mantra silently within as we stay with sat, chit, ananda. 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 Sat chit 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 ananda. Allowing these qualities of love and joy. Bliss. Truth. Consciousness. To come to their full expression within. We came into this world naked, in our truth, no judgment. Pure, unbounded consciousness, bliss. Our true nature. Bringing our palms to naanaskar at the heart. Thank you for sharing this deep, nourishing practice today. May you feel abundance in nature, abundance in consciousness, no lack. May it leave you with feelings of joy, of truth, of connection to your cosmic true nature. Connected to your bliss consciousness. Namaste, everyone. The light in me honors the light in you. Have a beautiful day. Haryam tathap, stay in that nice blissful state.